...order? Yes, let's move. Sure. May I turn over your heart, please? Have fun. Thank you. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So at this point in our agenda, we invite the public to address the board. If the limit is three minutes or less, comments will be timed. I remind the audience that this is a public session of the board and not a meeting of the public. Although the board will not respond to speakers during either during public comment or after the meeting, staff members may contact or follow with written communication. If multiple speakers address a same subject under request of the subsequent, speakers only add new information. The time limit for a given topic is 20 minutes regardless of the number of speakers. If a speaker wishes to be heard on more than three topics, the speaker will be allowed up to a total of 10 minutes to address all desired items. Persons who have complaints against employees of the district are encouraged to seek resolution of those complaints by utilizing the district's written complaint procedures rather than orally addressing them at a meeting. Please refrain from applauding after each speaker. Public comment is not allowed. Dawn Augustine?
Yes. What do you like to go?
Thank you, sir.
Pete, my son is a student at Carter Barton Elementary School. Last year, our student was on April at the sheriff's. I suddenly had an altercation with one of the students. The student came back and said that his brothers and his cousins were gang-battling, and he was going to get a gun and come back and shoot my son and his friend. Now, we addressed the principal with the matter, and nothing was done. This is the first incident that's happened at the school. Now, two weeks ago, the kid came after my son after school. He told my boys, "No, that we don't fight, but you don't let anybody put their hands on you." And the principal was also thrown back. The kid came after my son after school, dropped his backpack, and ran at him. My son ended up getting into a fight with him. I thought if the kid wants, he went to the ground, and that was the end of it. It was classified as mutual combat, which, under your guidelines, the student that shoots is a bully, and it's not mutual combat. It is actually self-defense. Something needs to be done. This kid is a tall one. He has an attitude. And if the issue wanted to get there, but this child is all about it, he's going to have a brutally rough life. Something that needs to be done, and a safety needs to be done. Now, another gentleman spoke to super-impotent, and he said he was on the alert if there was any issues to be done. You know, nothing has been done, and needs to be done. And then they need to be able to go to the school and be safe. And like I said, it has been run up to the principal, have meetings with him, and it just gets pushed off that he will handle everything himself, that he can do his own investigation, and the sheriff department doesn't. If the sheriff department comes to him and asks him about it, he can tell them that he has handled it, and they will let it go, which is not true. So I'm asking the board, you know, to do something about this. Our kids need to be able to go to a safe school, and if there is an issue to be done, then it needs to be handled. The kid should have been expelled at that time, per your guidelines. Thank you for your time.
Andrea Hoby?
My name is Andrea Hoby. I have been a parent at Barton continuously for 14 years with my four children. My fourth is currently a sixth grader. Last school year, there was an incident where my son was repeatedly kicked from behind in his own classroom while in line from a child who was trying to knock him down. My son, who was in jujitsu at the time, pinned the child to the ground and secured him as trained until the teacher arrived. This was our first, but certainly not our last incident with this child. This child was suspended many times, according to my son, but no information was given to me citing privacy issues. Even if another incident happened between my son and this child, and there were many, I asked the name of the child, and I was told that I couldn't have this information. The messages started coming to me from parents, staff, and teachers. This child had been harassing adults and students for years and growing older every year. The tension had been building, and the advice was given for my son to walk away and to not even look towards this child. "Don't help him, don't talk to him, don't play with him." This was repeated to my child over and over again. So now everyone is walking on eggshells around this child so as not to set him off. My son comes home from school and tells me that he was told that this child was bringing a gun to school the next day to shoot my son and Noah Augustine. What? I immediately contacted the assistant principal, Mrs. Burns. Mrs. Burns, she states that yes, she had been conducting interviews all day. Really? I asked her at what point did she feel it was not necessary to contact me, the parent of the child who was threatened. She apologized and said that it had been a busy day, and she was still doing her investigation. I wouldn't have even known about it unless my son had told me after school. Noah's dad and I met with the principal and the assistant principal the next morning, but they didn't feel it was necessary to call the sheriff and make a report. The sheriff was called, and a report was taken, but only after forcing the administration to do so. Fast forward to Noah getting sucker punched, and then defending himself, and both getting suspended, which that in itself was a joke because it turns out it was an in-school suspension. So let's keep the bully who continually harasses students and staff alike on campus, and then let him walk home with the rest of the students where he continues to harass and bully students. I'm not sure if your policy is just to keep kids in school so the district is paid, or if you are trying to counsel them while they are there. But rewarding them with lunch on Fridays from college junior if they are good, all week, or letting them play with the keyboard in the office is constructive if the behavior is not improving. Maybe the district needs another plan to protect the students of the school and not just the bully. I agree this child needs help, but not at the expense of the rest of the students. What are you teaching the rest of the kids? That there are no consequences for bad behavior? I shouldn't have to tell my son I drop off every morning? Protect yourself and protect others. It's not his job, it's yours.
It's all yours.
Thank you very much.
Charlene Raping?
Good evening. My name is Charlene Raping. I am a parent at D.C. in the third of the Parkville Elementary School. Me and as parents of the Parkville Elementary School, we have a unique situation with our drop-off and pickup procedures. One that we are asking if we can get the school board to help us evaluate. We have some safety concerns with Riverside County Sheriff's Department to consult us to assess in the mornings, the past Wednesday, the Fourth of September, and the last Wednesday of August, the traffic drop-off and pickup procedures. You need help. Conjoin me with Riverside County Sheriff's Department, our school site administration, help our school board, as well as the CUPSBs engineering, and team to see if we can help the flow of traffic and make it safer for students. Being aware, we're white-handlers in the number-two lane, and the work team that happens the first day was that incitations being given at just one street. Addition, we have 29 vehicles, although they're children on Harrison Avenue, which is a made thoroughfare, and a major safety concern. And numerous, we had several staff members making white-handlers lanes in number-two lanes. White-handlers in number-two lanes because they cannot access the parking lot in a timely manner to get to school. Our help is as the park's parents, but we could set a task force to evaluate and into putting that action in place so that we can make it safer for parents and students alike, and hoping that we could count on support from the school board. Okay, thank you.
On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for your comments. Although the board will not respond to your concerns at this time, please be assured that all comments are taken seriously. As I said previously, a staff member will contact you or follow up with written communication. Presentation to the board.
Good evening, President DeBarra.
Good evening.
For members, Dr. Lynn in Cabinet, and guests, thank you so much for the opportunity to share our students' progress we've seen this evening. Dr. Patra is going to spend the bulk of our presentation reviewing and sharing the preliminary S X words of our students. As you know, they took the test back in the spring, and then we're just going to talk about some next steps. So with that, we are going to just share a couple things. As you know, we pay close attention and review and monitor the board-focused area goals that we actually reviewed this morning, and we continue our mission of providing quality education, supporting academic excellence, and preparing our students to be in college career and life ready. We've seen this bill for a few years now, and we are continuing our deep work with cultivating that collaborative culture, making sure we're deepening our learning within our collaborative teams across the district, throughout the schools, and all of our teams, from cabinets all the way, or actually from the board all the way down to the teacher teams, faculty teams. We want to make sure that we are guaranteeing accountability, internal limits, and external agency, some of that proceeding. And then also, we want to make sure we're focusing direction. We continue to refine our direction. They change when we get new information, and just continue that work. And as you know, those four quarters are dynamic. They're working at the same time and in the middle, which I'm going to just change that shape to the heart of leadership. And that's leadership at all levels. That's leadership of our teachers, our administrators, our support staff, all working together to support our students and their journey of learning and college and career dream. So with that, I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Patra. Thank you, Dr. Simon.
Well, good evening, board and Cabinet. So tonight, and Dr. Simon shared, we're going to go into the preliminary S F data that I want to just orient us into our accountability system as a reminder. So as you may remember from our earlier presentation last year, we talked about the California Dashboard and how it was created to look at the accountability of how schools and districts are progressing. And it was created with three themes in mind, with multiple measures, a focus on equity, which our district has really been focusing on and doing great work in the state that's coming along with us, and then supporting local decision-making with the use of our local indicators. As a reminder, there are six state indicators, and those six state indicators are listed up here. We have high school graduation rate, rate which ties to our seniors, our academic performance, which is grades three through eight and 11, our suspension rate, which is tied to grades K through 12, our English learner progress, which is K through 12, our prepared for college and career readiness, that's known as our CCI, that is graduation rates of grade flow, and chronic absenteeism is grade eight. Tonight's presentation, we're going to highlight our academic performance in with the preliminary data. Some of you may have seen this before, perhaps saw here, when we looked at an example of what this academic indicator would look like. And the way this works is, as a reminder, the Y-axis is our status. How did we do this year in our average distance from grade? And our X-axis up at the top is compared. So we're looking at change. We're looking at how did we do in 2018 as compared to 2017 and 18. So 18, 19 to 17, 18. And later in the presentation, I'm going to show you some preliminary data around what does our dashboard data look like for us in San Francisco. So let's also keep in mind, we have four local indicators. And the four local indicators are basic conditions. So do we provide the facilities for our students and staff to be able to provide the education? Our implementation of academic standards, and as you can see, it's boxed because it is tied to our state testing that we are going to look at today in the results. Our climate surveys such as California Helping Kids Survey and our parent involvement and parent engagement. But again, tonight, we'll really focus on academic indicator and the standards that they're tied to. So when we look at the data, we want to keep in mind, how are the scores coming in? And so for us to orient us, a reminder that standard exceeded is also referred to as a four, standard met is referred to as a three, nearly met is a two, and not met would be a one. And our goal, when you think about that California Dashboard, is tied to our scores above the red line, so students in standard met exceed. Okay? So as we start looking at our data over the last many years, we've always looked at data in change over time. So this is a look at our data over the last five years. We now have five years' worth of data, and we can see the progress that our district has made in moving our students, in students exceeding and meeting the standard. A comparison of the last two years for KLA in Stephanie, 18, our scores, they were about the same from 17, 18, 18, 19. Keep in mind that all the data we're going to look at tonight does come under the standard ground rule, and they do ramp up or down depending upon the assessment. But when you put it on the California website, so for the scores, they do go up to the hundreds twice in the data. So now, if we turn our attention to MAP, we see again a five-year trend of how we're doing in our data. And if we look at our data for the last two years, and the comparison, we're seeing that overall, for the whole district in the canon, three through eight and 11, we're seeing about a two-point gain in students who are made in standard met or exceed. And this is a just high-level look of how did our grade levels do? And we had our third, fourth, and fifth grade, they were slightly down. And the comparison again to say 2017, 18 to 2018, 19 over the data. When we look at sixth and seventh grade, they were slightly up. And then for eighth and 11, we saw that they maintained this growth. In MAP, we saw again a look at third grade maintained, fourth grade was slightly up, fifth grade maintained, sixth was slightly up, seventh slightly down, and then eighth and 11. So again, that is that standard look at data that we've looked at for so many years. But as we turn our attention to a journey of a student, we want to be mindful of how are our students progressing? And with this system, it really allows us to see the scale scores increasing in expectation, and it's aligned to increasing expectation regarding standards. And so we're going to take a look at the journey of a student. So for our first look, we're starting with the fourth grade cohort. So when we look at this, this data up here is a matched student data. So when we look at all of these data points, keep in mind it's matched students, that mean the same group of kids in grade three are also being looked at in grade one. So when we look at this journey of a student, we're seeing that we are, students are progressing. We go to grade five, again, this is the next group of students. We're seeing their progress, students moving in expectation and moving in that group as well. And we move to grade six, we're seeing some continued growth. And then we go to grade seven, and this is the first group of students, and we have five years with the data. This is so exciting because we haven't had this before. So we're seeing now the growth in expectation for students, the growth in how they're doing on the test. And then as we move to grade eight, we're seeing again some growth in areas from the first year that they took the test to the last year. And so again, looking at that data and being able to reflect on the needs of the students to continue to help us support them in growth. But in MAP, this is one of my favorite slides we've got because it is the high school. So when we look at this, keep in mind there's a big gap, right? There's a gap between grade eight and grade 11, and that's because it's a reminder they do not get the test in grades nine and 10. And so from a school site perspective, a teacher perspective, it's almost like it's a shock and a dart, but it's not because our teacher can really be wonderful, what are the standards expected from students? And as you can see, when we look at grade seven and eight, and then they jump to grade 11, we're seeing the growth in our students in the expectations for being called in for ready, which is the goal, and being able to demonstrate that in our business. Okay? And this is something that we're really looking at, that how do we help continue to see the progress of students growing and even in the process of achieving standard met. Now, when we turn our attention to the map, we're going to look at that same look at the data, it's the journey of the student. And so again, we're just, we're seeing this progress of students over time, matched student data. Okay? And we get to, again, my favorite one, which is the grade eight to 11, because remember, our goal in all of this journey is that we are saying, what do we want students to be able to do when they leave us? And so when we look at this hallmark of, hey, we're seeing the kids progress, this is really, really important work, and we're seeing it reflected in students' growth. So now, we're going to turn our attention to closing the gap. We want to highlight, this is a four-year look at, actually, I'll just open it. So we've got a look at English learners, how are English learners doing over the last five years? And I want to remind everybody, when we look at certain populations, and I will point them out, there is a fluidity of the students being included in groups because the students, for example, reclassified, they fall out of this English learner population. So it's not as stable as it would be looking at a matched student dataset. So here is our data for our English learner students over the last five years, our economically disadvantaged students over the last five years. And as a reminder, how students are identified as economically disadvantaged, there's two data points that are calculated together. So if a student is receiving green reduced lunch, and their parent has not graduated from high school, those two data points are collected together, and that is how we identify our economically disadvantaged students. And so we can see our progress over time with our students in this category. When we look at our students with disability, again, we're seeing progress over time over the last five years. And as a reminder, this is all ELA right now. And then we look at our foster youth data. Again, this is a group that has fluidity in who's included in it because there is movement. And so to point out in particular, for 2018 to 2019, there was a difference of about 100 students who took that test in this population. And still, we're seeing the growth of students and maintaining the growth. Now, we turn our attention to homeless. This is another population, students, that does have fluidity on who is included because of their mobility. And now, we're going to turn our attention to ethnicity. So we have our first group that we're looking at is our Hispanic population over the last five years. And then our African-American population, our white population. And now, we're going to look at MAP. So as we look at MAP, again, as a reminder, this is our English learner population, so the redecent students now come out of this group. And so we're seeing now a look at our data over the last five years, our economically disadvantaged students, our students with disabilities. And the next two are again the local groups. And so you have foster youth with, this one having a difference of 100 kids between 2018 and 2019. And homeless is also that little white group. I want to go back for a second on foster youth. The reason there's no data for 2015 in both ELA and MAP is because as a state, we didn't really start collecting it until that 2016. That's why there's not five years' worth of data.
The difference in 100, 100 more?
100 less, they do less. Yes, it's 100 less students. It was, I want to say, 254 in one year, and it was one difference over the other year. And now, we're turning our attention to our Hispanic population. So again, this is a five-year look at how are students progressing? And these data points are not matched students. So just as a reminder, this is not matched student data as we looked at the closing of gap. This is a group of students identified with these categories. So now, when we go to African-American, our white students. And now, remember, I said I was going to bring this back to the California Dashboard. So it's probably easier to see on your copies in front of you. But what I wanted to highlight is, at the very beginning, I referenced, where does that data go and how does it connect to the dashboard? This is a preliminary look at our dashboard for the district in ELA. And we're going to look at, so this is elementary schools, and we'll look at middle school and high school. And then we'll turn our attention to MAP with the same look at. Okay? So I want to point out up here again, this is our Y-axis. And so that is how did our schools do for this particular school year? Okay? And there is a range that the state has set based on which grade level. And I can get two bigger copies too, if you'd like. So over here is the Y-axis, how did we do this year? The X-axis up at the top is how did we do relative to the previous year? So did we have an increase, a decrease, or was it maintained as defined by the state? And so as you notice, these are all of our elementary schools, and the majority of our schools are showing not only that they are growing in how they're doing, but they're also moving in this direction. So they're going into the green and the red, the green and the blue category, and that is one of the things that we're striving for. Are we seeing growth of a student? Again, it's about the journey of a student and their growth. As we turn our attention now to MAP for elementary, again, we're seeing that our schools are not only moving, but opening. And that is again our goal. Keep in mind, as we also look at that data, we're also reflecting on what is the data telling us as we're moving forward to Dr. Simon's point about that internal and external accountability? How can we use that information to help us focus on our attention, to help our students to achieve better? Now, we're going to look at middle school ELA. And then we go into our middle school MAP. And now, high school ELA. And our continuation schools are also included on here as well, with the exception of foreign trade. One of the things that we need to be aware of is, if you don't have a certain number of students taking a test over two years, you don't have a matched data point. So then they could potentially not show up on there. They are what's called a DOS school, so they have an alternate way to look at how they're being monitored. And then when we look at MAP, here's where we are for high school. And so as I come to a close with the data for tonight, one of the things I want to remind us is, all of the data is helpful for us in our work with instruction. And as a reminder, when I started, I said this connects to our standards. So this is one of the ways that we are monitoring our progress in looking at implementation of our academic standards, keeping in mind our goals for preparing our kids for college and career readiness. And so I'm going to turn our presentation over to Mrs. P.
We're going to pause for a moment.
Sorry.
Question.
Our board has questions. Oh, okay, sorry, I have to move the pens.
I have a question on the student economic disadvantage.
Yes.
You said, did you find out if the parent went to finish high school or... Are the parents filling out a form to tell us?
Yes. So when they register and they do the enrollment, it asks parent education level, and that's where they identify. If it is blank, then we don't have that data, and it wouldn't be included in it. So it would potentially be that a student doesn't apply for a free and reduced lunch, and their parent hasn't filled that out, it wouldn't be categorized in that group.
In order to apply for free and reduced lunch, the parent has to write that they didn't...
No, those are two separate forms, two separate pieces.
Is this a new form? My kid would just a lot of remember that line, but anyways.
I just was wondering, because how are we...
Some parents choose to not answer that question.
Yeah. So like, what's the percentage of the parents that are answering?
I don't have that, but I could find that out and see what percentage are answering the parent education level just in general, if that would be right.
Yeah.
First.
When, in an integration of the integrated MAP, when did that start?
I don't remember the exact, please.
Because I was wondering.
So do you know that? Like, that they've integrated?
Thirteen or fourteen?
I guess.
I just want to make a comment. I just want to commend you, we're seeing more kids going from the red and orange level to the blue, and that makes me excited, it really does. And to see them move across is even more exciting. So even a ship of one point or two points, we should be celebrating.
You know, I noticed that the other school district maintains over 20, 20% of our students not meeting standards. And those are, it's 22%, 25%, those are kids, probably thousands of them. And so, the trend I'm seeing is that that's what we need to do. Those are the kids that are historically not doing well. American, foster kids, and it's very consistent right there, but very far. If you look at the top, yeah, there are successes there, but if you look at the bottom, it's very, it's very consistent. And so, it's not your fault, you're, 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 you're a decision. So it's good that you're giving us the data. And I think our leaders, they will be conscious of that fact, that while you're celebrating, some here, the bottom, the people, generally, we can say, school district does not, that they're not, sorry, equitable yet because historically, not achieving kids are maintained. Relation, setting the observation. And even in school, red schools that are, you know, the pattern, I see some students doing. So we have to do something for those.
If I could, so one of the pieces, and I'm actually going to have two of our schools come up here and share some of their work. Part of what we've been able to reflect on in our journey is about how we use the data to get at the root of why something is happening. And so, by getting at the root, that will help us as we're working to focus our attention. And that has been the work that we have in the midst of. And so, things like, we go back for a second, and point out our elementary math. And so, we're going to hear from two of our schools. One in particular, we're going to see how they took the data, and they're able to peel it back to get at the root. Because then, what that will do is it will help support that instructional piece. So it's, it's not about a test, it's about the journey of a student, helping them have that access. So this is one of our progress monitoring tools to see, are we making the gains that we need to make? So that when they do graduate, they are able to be called to be ready. And so, I don't want to take a thunder from our elementary folks, they're going to come and talk to about this. But from an active example, that is what we're doing with the data, ready to drill and be able to look at what are those needs? And then, help support the teachers to go with the needs of those students. But it's definitely a journey, definitely a journey. Any other questions?
Mrs. Barbara? Can you get to that over here? So Jennifer has just presented a preliminary CAS data, including some of the data. And this data helps us to set the metrics for our schools that they have been focusing. Tonight, we are going to keep the two third schools that are not only using the CAS data as some of the data, but they've used I-ready data, DCFA data, they have used public data data to analyze and go deep in the work of continuous improvement. We'll see tonight that both of these schools had identified math as their area of focus. And you'll see how they progressed through the work to get an improvement in their math course. And you'll see a significant improvement in the data that they will display tonight. And additionally, within this work, you'll see that they have common assurances as well as systematic approach to support all learners within the system of their school site. One more thing I'd like you to listen to as they speak is the work with our peer circle. You will see evidence in their presentation tonight, those four quadrants focusing their direction, looking at deep learning, making sure that there's continuous collaboration, and finally, security and building. And so, with that, I'd like to call our first staff tonight, which is Veronica Rodriguez, to talk about the Washington story along with Cardi, one of our Cardi garden, one of the critical teachers of this one.
Hopefully, we can go in what Jennifer said you would do for you. So yeah, I'd like to share a group of our story, really a journey that we've been on for the last few years, specifically last year, and then on to this year. So this last year, our focus was math. It has been continuing for us in math, but last year specifically, it was math we felt needed. So it should kind of hit a flatline, or maybe a little bit different, things are different in our focus for a while. So we look at this field, what's looking at and learn. But for us, as we look at our leadership team and that system approach, we were looking at this cycle of AINR, in a sense, right? We were taking our teams through analyzing. As a leadership team, we were coming together and saying, where are our downfalls? What do we see that we need to do? Determine our focus as a school from K to sixth. Yes, that assessment only is going to show us whether it's fifth or sixth, or just maybe based on that one assessment. What we're going to do with our kindergarten, so how are we going to see that? That continues growth and focus from then as our leading member. Determine our site focus, which last year, again, was that, that math piece, and that analysis. In AINR, we looked at data, we looked at I-ready, we looked at our S-Back, we looked at our common formative assessments. And we're also using, within I-ready, there's these standard mastery sessions teachers can use, specifically for our essential standards. We had spent two years prior to last year focusing what is essential. When we say there's a student, a kindergarten blocks in, it is essential that they know these five things when they need that within math, when they address, to be simple. Regardless of the teacher, their classroom, whatever situation they jump into, whether it's dual or English, it is a guarantee when your child leaves kindergarten, they will be able to do these things. That's essential for them to be successful to go to the next grade level. We have been trying to build that, so AINR is based on that. And then, in implementation, we're looking at what are the assessments that we're using within kindergarten through sixth grade as we do, with the benchmarks and checking along the way. S-Back is just at the end, right, that autopsy in a sense, right, how to do, but we need to have those markers along the way. We have instructional practices that we were looking at, intervention specifically last year. When we talked about that equity piece, we were focused around all hands on deck, is what we called it. Our all hands on deck time, we said we have this many individuals on campus at this set time. We can pour them into every single grid level to ensure that our students are looking at our data. We have these pockets of kids at every single grade level. How can we provide intensive intervention for 15 minutes each day, every day, for every single student that needs that at every single grade level? So create it, it is huge wall of times and dates and data so that we can ensure that our kids are receiving that. Last year, we spent the year, in a sense, building that, creating it, and seeing some growth and success with it. So that this year, we started the year with that, not needing to ask the teachers for permission to say, hey, what would be a good time? They thought of it last year because we built it as the year went on. This year, knowing this is a guarantee, we're doing this. It's not a, would you like to, it's happening. This is the time that it's happening, these are the bodies that are coming. What is essential, that's our focus. How do we know the students receive that information? How do we really master it? And that is our plan this year, we're going to gather that. So that's our implementation piece of it, to ensure those pieces. And refinement, refinement is the key, right? If we can't go back and refine, then we really aren't doing much of what we're already doing. So that is our focus to continue to think about what are the next steps? Taking a look at, did we do what we intended to do? Did it work? Did our all hands on deck work? But really, this whole wheel just continues because we're going to go back and analyze our data. But the big important part for us is making sure that our teams can work on that refinement piece. If we can't go back from the left, there really is nothing more to do. You just did it, you don't really know if it worked. This process took place within our leadership team with the hopes, not well, the hopes, but the intention that we're working this process together as leadership teams, they're also doing the same with their PLC, right? That collaboration that they're doing is essentially doing the same process at their grade level with the work that they're doing. So Cardi's going to speak a little bit to this.
Okay, so as Concha said, our goal for last year, or what we're looking towards, was mastering or increasing our proficiency in math. So we started, I believe, at 41%. And through this entire process, and then we got our data at the end, or beginning this year, we are at 45% meeting and exceeding in math on the task results. So just to kind of go through the process, this is just a snippet of what we went through in our leadership meetings. And we talked about how every grade level would identify what their focus was going to be. We all are doing math, but every grade level had their own focuses, obviously kindergarten through sixth grade. And those were also based on the essential standards that we chose in the year prior to that. Every grade level determined exactly how they were going to do that, and it looked a little bit different in kinder, third, sixth. And as a team, we had to come together, and it really added to our accountability as to what we're going to do as a team to make sure that this happens. And again, every team was a little bit different, every grade was a little bit different. So how we implemented some of these processes looked different. One of the practices that we did as a staff was called Four Problems of the Day. It looked a little bit different through the grade levels, but it, in our leadership teams, it allowed us to dialogue about how are our teams working together? Are they going to be on board? Is everyone going to be open to doing the same thing in their classrooms? So we did, we came together last year, and I do believe by the end of the year that every classroom on our campus was on board and doing this specific practice. It's like a, sometimes it was 15 minutes a day, it might be a little bit longer in other grades. And we did see results, and every teacher tracked it a little bit differently, but I know in other grade, we did a visual. So our kids could actually see how they progress even in a week. How did they start on Monday on the standard, and how did they look by Friday, just on those daily interventions? We have access to our instructional coaches. We did a campus training on, with the teachers to how to show them how to access what's available on campus. And at our staff meetings, we were also sharing best practices and having grade level or teams share out what was working for them. Every four weeks, we were revisiting as a team and looking at results and looking at data and determining, are we going to move forward? What small groups are we going to keep behind or keep where they are? And we even had some groups that were ready for enrichment. And with the all hands on deck piece, like Veronica mentioned, we were able to do that because we had all the bodies and people in our classrooms. And then, some kids were actually doing enrichment. So for Math Field Day, we had the Math Field Day game. So our kids that had mastered what we were working on at that time were able to go into a different group. And those groups were always moving. I know one of our grade levels would reassess weekly and check on Friday, and then those kids would then move into the appropriate place for them. Some grade levels did it maybe three weeks at a time, depending on the skill that they were working on.
Monday morning? No, yeah, so I think the big piece for us is that although 45 doesn't seem like a lot, right? It doesn't, and that's not that we're happy with that, but we're happy with the growth going from 40 to 45 in math, which is great for us. And I think the big piece for us is that's what we set our goal to be, and we got to the end, and that's where we were because we were able to track it. You know, the big piece for us is that we're all focusing in the same direction. You know, nobody is going broke and deciding, we're not going to do this. And all hands on deck made sure that everybody realized the why behind it, right? Why are we doing that? Why are we sending all bodies to the grade level one time? Why are we focused on those things terms? Because we said, we guarantee that if our students can do this, it will be successful for the next grade. I think the biggest piece for us is, you know, these templates are just templates. It means nothing if we do nothing with it. And I think that our teams were very intentional about, we wrote this down. They led their teams through ensuring, this is what we committed to. We're committed, we're going to do it. It might be difficult sometimes, it might be frustrating to have all bodies that are assigned to us at a certain given time, but we said that our kids can be successful if they have these pieces in place. So 45 is where we ended up with math, great. This year, this next template is our new year, our new commitment, right? We realize that we need to go back, and we want to make sure that we're doing it both in language and in math. We don't want to leave one behind. So taking only the two pieces, what do we need to focus on? Still the essential standards, specifically though, we see there's a need within comprehension and specifically numbers and operations within math. So again, utilizing those essential standards, creating some kind of an assessment that we can kind of track that in the word-based format, so that we can say by the end of the year, this many more students were able to master that, I mean, in kindergarten for a second. But the key for us is that our leadership team understands and they're committed to leading their teams down the same path. And that we're all moving in the same direction, following the same guide. Granted, strategies may be a little bit different, right, from K to sixth, but the focus is the same, and that's the key for us. Is there any question?
What were some of the refinements of this? What were some of the refinements that you, I mean, I think I have to stuck out to you that you're making, you're going to make? Or that, I mean, we're really eye openers for you, or are, were there any that you?
Well, the assessment tools, right? Because a lot of the grade levels would say, well, I want to use standard mastery piece, which is fine, or they use the common assessment. But as we talked about in leadership, it was, we all have to make sure that we are administering it the same way, or the data's not going to be the same, right? And you don't have a tool that's a standard-based tool, right? You created an assessment, we all administer it the same way, we're all having the same expectations when we create it? Are we looking at the same information in the same way? So that's the big piece for us, just that refinement of how are we collecting our data and how are we going to utilize that? That's a portion. Can you think of other pieces within refinement for the teacher specifically? And you know, we have to refine our all hands on deck as well this year. You know, when we talk about, yes, we focus those 15 minutes intensely on our kids who are struggling, but what are we doing with everybody else who's also above grade level? Because that was a big piece for us too. So that's been a big component of, how are we enriching our kids who are more than capable for those 15 minutes every time? And the kids that are sort of a grade level, they're giving the attention by equal to one person. So that's in a refinement this year for us as well.
We used, years ago, a number of our school members fought hard to have to do a language immersion.
Yes.
To go to school. It's not, it's not an easy struggle. So we got that program going. And then, our EL is traditionally not scoring well. We studied that test, right? Because if you want to measure effectiveness based on the test, then you're always going to lose insight because it's hard for an EL to really master the language. So my question is, how, I know you're equitable, you know, because you have to do a language, they have, they have in an equitable way. But there's no escape, effectiveness in California is measured by S-Nine. But how are we doing now, EL, they, they, we, they, is the score, is they over 52% to that going down?
I'm talking about specifically in dual, as a whole. So our ELs in dual do outperform our ELS in our English learning classes. We do see that consistently. Right, that's the intent, that's the purpose. So that's why we try our hardest to ensure that all of our ELS that are true ELS are starting in kindergarten. You know, that's what we fight for, for that equity within math classrooms, so that we can ensure that we're servicing them. Because we see that, we see those results year after year after year. There are kids who reclassified quickly. There are students who master a second language much faster, and that's the intent of dual. So we do see that success.
It's working.
Yes, our dual students do outperform, they do outperform their English counterparts.
So can you explain to me, all hands?
All hands on deck, yes, that's just the name gave it. But essentially, it means everybody who's available at that time is in there supporting the students, right? So we have five weeks late, we have ten specialists that we pay for as a total of one. And then, we have our teachers. So we have five teachers for every grade level, and then we have three ten specialists that we pay for, and then we have also five weeks late as well. So we have twelve nights essentially that we can utilize, and we schedule at a different time during the day to ensure that we can get grade levels of 15 minutes, and some of our primaries get up to 25 minutes every single day to give that intensive intervention. And that, it changes because it is meant to be fluid. So that means that every four weeks, we are revisiting the groups, and they can change out and different resources can be added. Now, some of the students who are higher, that can work independently because they're able to kind of work on a project-based learning activity. The expectation now is here's your activity, you're a group of five, you're working on your own because you can do that, which is what would happen in a classroom, anytime they have a teacher have bringing notes and whatnot. So that's where we kind of added to that. So the all hands on deck just means if everybody who's available at that time is essentially.
My second question is, do you, after you do your assessments with teachers and your all hands, do you talk to the kids about this? And are they part of this assessment process of how do you think you're doing? Do you think, I mean, I don't know.
We have, we have a math, we have done, we talk about like our test results with our kids, and we do goal setting. So even within the small groups or within our classes or a variety of ways, we do include them, show them where they are, and talk about goal setting, where do you want to be? I mean, that could be with all hands on deck, we do that with L-Pack. We set those goals, and they know about it, and they know the steps that we're taking to get them there. And with, with the all hands on deck, those really meeting groups, they're down to like four or five people, students per goal. So it's a really small group where we're able to reach, I feel like, reach them really effectively.
And then, of course, celebration is always part of that. And so, are the parents also informed when their child has met a goal and they're moving on?
I think that depends on the classroom teacher. I, last year, would send my results home weekly for like that one strategy of the daily war. Every week, I would send home the results to my parents. And, you know, we encouraged the kids to share their progress because it was definitely, it was daily progress, honestly, that we were seeing sometimes. it was daily progress honestly that we were seeing sometimes. So I personally did. Um, I don't know that every teacher have the same, you know, way of communication, but I did.
Communication's a different teacher, but yes, they, you know, oh, yes, we did, yeah.
Last, lastly, it's my bit a little difficult. We don't need to respond to it. That's a general question. Uh, in, in terms of the notion of coherence that we're talking about, Fulan is saying that, that would be a good tool to use to improve, to improve out what, what they tend to do, right? And that's more, it's more than, more than imperative, it's, it's getting improved, right? So how do you connect the notion of coherence, you know, from focusing direction to collaborative people, collaboration, learning, and the security and accountability in terms of the helping the in-stance learners improve their performance? Are you, is that school pretty much conscious about the coherence model that you, you can talk about?
Are, are they familiar with Fulan's work as a whole?
Yeah, because they said it's a pool because we're, we're a coherent history.
Correct. So they understand that the, the ability to work as a system, right? That you've got this cycle of degree that we're working through. If you said, can I step on campus and ask them about Fulan, are they going to be able to recite that to me? No, I can honestly tell you, no. No, I haven't necessarily had that conversation with them. But are we doing that work in regards to connecting? Yes. Connecting it, we are, we are. Um, and, and I'll tell you, I think that sometimes um it, it's easier to show them exactly what we're doing and all kind of move in the same direction that fits. For some teachers, right, they could get lost in, this is the book, this is the person we're following. They could get lost in the name or the idea of things versus just working together and understanding the why. Why are we doing this? Why are we working together, moving in the same direction? Um, which is that components part. But specifically to say, would they understand Fulan and his work? No. No, I, I couldn't say that. They could tell you about the book and the work, but, but we're doing the work. Um, I don't know that they call it Fulan's work.
Thank you, Mrs. Robles.
Okay, you. Rest cards.
Hi, thank you. Can I, can I speak to the question you just asked? I think that the way that we connected it is through our P L C work. So I agree with Veronica that they may not know the Fulan work, but it definitely is connected through our P L C process and answering those four questions. And it definitely meets those four quadrants. Um, so just to speak to, oh, I didn't even click my, um, mark. Um, and then here is our work. Um, we are entering our fourth year in our journey and I'm very proud to share. We looked at our data, um, twenty fourteen, fifteen data. So this was um in the year twenty fifteen, sixteen. And so we saw that fifty-eight percent over twenty-four percent meeting the standard in the area of math. Um, we looked at, um, this definitely, we have some work to do here. Um, and so we worked with our leadership to see where we were going to focus specifically. We looked at the problem solving thing. We thought that the skills here would be best transferred in, as into other areas. Um, and then we can incorporate our other claims into problem solving. And so our data then, we had eighteen percent of our students above standard. We had fifty, fifty percent at ordinary standard and thirty-two percent below. So we did have a lot of work to do here. Um, so we spent the next two years really work, uh, working through our P L C um process and collaboration and really looking at that P L C work. So how do we deepen learning, um, build clarity? Um, we spent time really working on building capacity, really learning deeper. What are we talking about when we're looking at the area of problem solving? Um, we defined and clarified expectations and then we pinpointed practices in. Um, and we spent the next time um really looking at as a whole to build that equity piece. How do we help those common assurances for all of our students? And so that's the grade that you see there. So from kindergarten through fifth grade, and we do have sixth grade as well, it's a fifth grade up there. I wanted to make sure I showed you everything. Um, we looked at really developing as a whole through all grade levels. What are the expectations for all of our kids? Um, and so we spent that next um couple of years really honing in on what that's going to look like. So we meet, um, we developed assessments with the next piece. How do we monitor? Um, this is what we're going to teach those, how do we monitor to make sure that our students are improving, our students are growing? Um, so that next piece is really looking at what is the evidence of student learning. Um, so here we have um common assessments that we developed at every grade level. Um, this is where we record our, our data to look at what strategies are we using? Um, how are our students doing? What are the strengths and the areas of growth? And they pertain to the expectations that we set for our students. Um, and then three times a year, we need to really look at student work, discuss how our kids are doing, and then develop a plan for next steps as to how are we going to respond if, um, the students are getting there? Um, what are we going to do to enrich? If students are not getting there, how are we going to support and what are we going to do to provide that support? So that's that document right there. Um, and then I'm going to have, who's Stephanie Cardenas? I'll tell you about what that looks like in the classroom.
Okay, so the grant that Cecilia just shared, um, we all refer to them as our success indicators. Um, and we started at the grade level, like you said, you know, really identifying, um, what were those um indicators of success that we want our students showing? Um, you know, we became very clear on them, what we really want to see. Um, and then at the grade level, uh, we built capacity by, um, you know, uh, working together and really um identifying and making examples for our kids, doing that work. Um, that important work of instructional design, which um through this process we found is so, so, so important um for uh ensuring our best practices the first time around that we teach it. Um, after we identify our success indicators, we then turn them into I can statements for our students. We put them as a kid-friendly language, um, to provide our students with that ownership of this is what I need to do to be successful. Um, put it in that language. Um, it still contain that academic language because, um, um, you know, we have those high expectations for our students. Um, and the ownership piece um really shifted um what we were seeing in the classroom. Um, the students were very aware of like, this is what I expected of me, this is what I need to do to be successful. Um, you know, they were noticing, oh, I'm not doing this, I need to do this. And, and there was a real beautiful shift in all from um seeing the work that our students were doing. A month here, you do see some example, um, examples of our focus. We were focused on practice standard one, making sense of the problem. And um, you know, building problem solvers out of our students, um, from kindergarten all the way to sixth grade. And when we would come back and share our leadership, the work that our kids are doing is just phenomenal. Um, and we are really clear with those expectations, not just amongst ourselves, but with our students. You know, a lot of the times we get so caught up in the work that we forget to tell our students what we expected them. Um, and that, that, that fills a huge hole because they are very aware of, you know, oh, this is what I need to do to be successful. Um, and it's, it's honestly, you know, being in the classroom is beautiful, seeing just their what amazing work they can do. And it's um, we're building that empathy too, you know, building um that social emotional within the classroom because they feel comfortable saying, you know, oh, I need help with this, or um, you know, learning from each other. Um, and then, you know, as a teacher is really taking um that, not to talk about your teacher, but I'm learning with you. Um, and, you know, building and, and making our success indicators, um, even better, which they're not upset. Um, we do, we do change them or we do add to them or we do, you know, discuss them. Um, and that was a real, uh, I think, shift on our side. And um being very mindful and purposeful with our design and our level of design.
So currently, the, the most current data that we've looked at, we have shown that our, um, the number of students that are exceeding meeting and exceeding went from forty-two to fifty percent. So it's been increased. Um, in the area of problem solving, um, we had a number of students who, um, were above standard go from eighteen percent to twenty-six percent. So that is definitely a celebration. Um, the number of students near um standard decreased from fifty-one to uh forty-seven percent. And then the number of students below standard decreased from thirty-one to twenty-seven percent. We also went, um, in the area of distance from level uh three, we went from a negative twenty-two to an negative eight. So that's a celebration as well. Um, but we still have work to do. This, this year we have continued with um vertically aligning. So again, that um continuous improvement cycle, right? Looking at, um, how does our work build? So how does kinder, our first grade build on kinder and, and, and every grade level build upon itself? So that again, we have those common assurances for all of our students. Um, so we've continued with vertical alignment. We've continued with just clarifying, how do we, like, to touch on what Veronica said, how do we assess and assess in the same way, have the same expectations for all of our students? Um, so we've continued that this year and then we're looking at our data to see if we do need to pivot into another instructional focus. Um, as we continue to build the work in the area of math, we do have to look at what other areas are, are needed to continue to work.
What's demographic for school demographics?
In terms of the, oh, we're very diverse. I don't know the exact numbers, but um, we're like, they're mostly Hispanic, but we, we are very diverse.
How, how does that zoom in gap? How does it look?
Um, in terms of, because I've, I've heard you ask a lot of our English learners, we're finding that our English learners are being successful. In terms of equity, our area of focus is our students with disabilities and our foster youth. Um, that's where our, our gap, that's what we see most of the gap. So we're looking at um providing intervention um in areas of support for our kiddos and our foster youth and our students with disabilities.
So what kind of intervention, by my ass? Because again, the coherence you say, there's got to be a balance of innovation and and implementation and improvement, right?
Right. So we do have our temp specialists that work and to, we're with the teachers to provide um additional intervention for our students. We do have um opportunities for our students to come and work with, um, I ready. Um, our uh teachers do intervention within their grade level as well, based on the area of focus. Um, so it is, we do look at math as one of our areas. Um, and so we are not a Title One school, so we use our resources for our temp specialists to help us provide that area of intervention as an additional piece of intervention to what's happening in the classroom.
So with the number, still the, the, the orange percentage is still high, right?
In terms of our, we were.
Not met, the standard's not met.
Those students not met. No, it is still high. And so that's why we continue to provide the.
Intervention to those kids, right?
Yes.
Because I think equity happens when we, when we pay attention to those kids.
Yes.
Who are scoring not doing well. You can celebrate improvement, but those kids, they maintain that score, then our equity efforts not happening.
Right. That's why it's important that we continue to monitor consistently and continuously so that we respond immediately to the needs of our students. And that the number of students, depending on what our focus, depending on the standard that we're working on, changes. And so that's been one of the um big pieces of work, just to really maintain that, again, that, that cycle and, and focusing on, on data and using the data to respond immediately to the needs of our students based on where they are.
This is, there's no right answer to this question, but you know, we're, we're talking a lot about data and, and what the dashboard shows and we're talking about the entire district. But can you um personalize it for us? I mean, you, you have, um, you know, we see the cohorts and, and I know it's third and sixth in your case, but can you just share maybe some stories that, that you guys have seen with the individual students instead of all, you know, the, the masses? But what your teachers or you have seen and witnessed and, and what excites you in, in that part?
Yeah. Um, so I teach second grade. Um, someone, I'm staying with our primary teachers. We don't test with X-Acto. We're a strong foundation to get them ready, um, for when they test us back in third grade. Um, I think one of the biggest things um through, through the instructional design, um, and just uh really honing it in as teachers, we were able to, um, when we did, you know, part of my, we did that common formative assessment. And we would come back together. It was very clear what students needed um support. Um, so we would take those students and, um, you know, create lessons and create, we, our, our focus was best practices first. And one of the great things that we saw was the academic language and the usage of that and their understanding of that. Um, and as a second grade teacher, um, you know, when I have my little ones um writing, um, using words like utilize and, you know, mathematical and equation, and because we expose them and we give them those opportunities um to learn that language and to learn those practices and to, you know, be problem solvers, it's just amazing. Um, when you give them that opportunity, what they can do. Um, and you know, I have personally, you know, we have, you know, parents or people walk in or, you know, kids going home and parents saying, uh, my kid is talking and I don't understand what they're saying. So you know, that's awesome to hear. Um, and then seeing them apply it continuously as we go up um through the grade levels. And as a teacher, you know, just seeing that growth, that immediate growth, because you keep hearing the word journey and it is a journey and it is, you know, sometimes it feels like it's like, you know, we're doing all this work and we're not seeing like that immediate success. Um, but in the classroom, I am able to see that immediate success um on a daily basis. And I think that's what um drives us and has really, you know, driven us as a team and as a school.
No, that, that's perfect because again, the bottom line is we're dealing with individual students and, you know, we get numbers and I understand that. Uh, you know, we're tracking things, but what's going on with the kids and their hearts and so, you know, that's perfect.
And then fitting to the, you know, the heart, you know, we, we do a, a focus on, you know, um, their heart and their social emotional wellbeing too. Because, you know, we've also, through discovering everything, you know, it doesn't matter what we teach them, if they don't have their heart, they're not going to learn. Um, so that's been a real focus to start. Um, and you know, we do have parents, actually do have a parent, you know, oh, you know, my kid's struggling, why? Um, what about academics? And you have, you know, the academics are coming. You know, we have to get the social emotional, which is, we're not saying emotionally, and we have same laws of growth there. And I said, you will see that academics come and progress because I am, you know, I think our psyche was very strong believing that, you know, we do need to focus on that part first. Um, it doesn't matter what we teach or what we do, we don't have their hearts. And we're not going to see that, right?
I haven't been to Washington yet. I will get there. What I did was in Rosa Parks and I did go into several of the classes where the students were needing the class discussion. They had a little garden, they explained what they were going to put in their garden. And um the teacher had it up there and everybody was sharing it and they were all engaged. And, and that's a wonderful way for kids to teach each other in their own little confines of what's important to them. But they were going through what the teacher asked them to do so that they could share with the other students who maybe not felt so uh confident in what they did do. I thank you. That was very entertaining.
And I want to thank you for giving the students their ownership because I, I, I feel it makes a huge difference. Because without knowing, they're evaluating themselves and trying to do better. So thank you so much.
And this is for, for the other elementary schools because I've been reading uh this whole notion of effectiveness, effective schools versus acceptable schools. Uh, that's why I'm asking all about the bottom, those kids who are not doing well. If we address them, we are really meeting their needs evidently, right? We can only hope and do our best to, to make sure that they improve. But, but, and many of our schools have, what, fifty percent not met? So we might say, well, we're not effective. No, but we're equitable, right? Because we're only measuring effectiveness from S-Bac. S-Bac is just one test. As you said, the heart, right? And my colleagues are asking about stories, real story of people in the classroom, success stories. And those are important because with our schools, I believe, because we have the policy and our administrators are trying to implement everything in our school. We're trying to be equitable, but let's not confuse effectiveness because of S-Bac and how equitable we are.
Thank you very much.
Please, please, now, our colleague, there, I will talk about. Um, this is kind of an exciting time because as Dr. Si has pointed out earlier, um, it's an illustration of our progress on our co-year in streaming. And um we've been on this journey for a few years and in hearing from Dr. Bujua, we kind of get to see how our summative test scores on the district level, they measure that progress for us, right? But even more importantly, I would say at the school level, kind of hearing about those cycles of inquiry and how you use them formatively instead of just waiting until the end and, and looking only at one measure, but looking at student achievement throughout the year. And how are we measuring learning? So thank you for that. There are also several principals in the audience who are from schools that are engaging in that work. And I want to thank all of you for being here as well. Um, I get the pleasure of talking to you about some next steps. Um, so next we're going to kind of turn our attention to being a little more. So next we're going to kind of turn our attention to being a little more future focused and I wanted to preview with you, kind of like a sneak peek, a couple of projects that are gonna illustrate our next steps on our coherence journey. And these projects are, clearly we have many projects, but these are specific little snapshots that we're excited about, that we wanna share with you. One of them is the CNUSD Coherent Instructional Framework and the other is a YouTube channel for professional development for our teachers and staff. So before we look specifically at those two projects, I do wanna kind of think about it and have all of us think about those two projects through the lens of equity. And here's why I say that. I know that equity is a really important thing for all of us in terms of the philosophical meeting, but I also know that what's really important to us is that we not only hold that belief, but we put it into action. So these two projects really give us that opportunity to put it into action because they both are going to potentially lay a foundation for some common assurances across the district that will impact students and also staff. So let's look at the CNUSD Coherent Instructional Framework first. So as you may know, we talked tonight about our work with Michael Fulon. This idea was actually born out of our work with him about two years ago when he was here in our district and he was presenting to a large group of principals. And it was actually lofted as a question from that group of principals, hey, you know, Michael Fulon talks a lot about having a district-wide definition of first best instruction. I'm not sure that we have that. So we began that conversation and one of the ideas that came out of that conversation is we're really committed to our idea of our three priorities, which is literacy, math, closing the achievement gap. And wouldn't it be wonderful if we could get really clear and specific across the district about what does that actually look like in practice in the classroom? And have that common language across the district. So from that interaction was born the idea. So in between then and now, we have kind of visioned out this concept of a framework that would allow all of our teachers to be able to go online, which is where we would like it to live, and have it be interactive and have it be a living document. They can grab tools, resources, they can even, if they are so inclined, drill deeper into the resource, or the research of where these tools and resources come from, if they wanna know more about that. And even, we'd like to see it have a collaborative space electronically. So those who are using those tools and resources, where can we as teachers across school sites have collaboration about how those tools and resources are working for us? So that's like the long-term vision we're just now engaging in the work. What you see there is the visual that the team of teachers and administrators from across the whole district who came together to begin the work, came up with that visual and the components inside the visual. And where we are now is actually filling those components. So one of our school sites earlier talked about the idea of instructional design as an example, that's our middle, I call them buckets, those little colorful things that go around first best instruction. So what specifically do we want to be our CNUSD way as it pertains to instructional design? Those are the conversations that are happening now and those buckets are being populated by the teams of teachers and administrators that are actually doing the work. So what I would like to do is show you a little brief infomercial about the instructional framework that was so meticulously crafted by our communications department. And then I'd like to invite a teacher who actually is engaging in the work of developing the framework, Michelle Gardner, to come up and speak to you just a little bit about her experience in developing this work as well. Let's watch. The CNUSD Educational Services Team, along with teachers and administrators, are developing an instructional framework for the Protonorco Unified School Districts, teachers and students. So we're really excited about having the opportunity to get on the same page across the district about what does first best instruction look like?
Using the instructional framework in the classroom would look like a good resource in planning. And if teachers come across something, they don't understand what it is, but they can go to that resource and get what they need to bring it up to speed on whatever that is.
The instructional framework will allow you to access different things like curriculum, resources for assessment. So those are things that you can use in application in your classroom to help you, you know, with your teaching, basically.
Yeah, I really think that the nice part about it is the equity piece. So kids go from school to school or they transfer or whatnot, they're getting similar experiences.
Teams of teachers and administrators have been working hard to develop a visual representation of the instructional framework. As you know, we have our three top priorities of literacy, math, and closing the achievement gap. But the instructional framework allows us to go deeper and define first best instruction, which contains five main components, including learning environment, instructional strategies, curriculum and standards, assessment, and instructional design.
One component of the instructional framework is instructional design. And I'm really excited about that because what we have done as a district now is we have adopted a planning framework, which is backwards design. Some of the benefits of backwards design is really starting with the end in mind. So when you're talking about unit planning, this is something that is going to be congruent and in alignment from TK through 12 across all districts.
What I love about the instructional framework is that it is geared towards student learning, but it's going to be easily accessible and user-friendly to every teacher in our district.
We really believe in the process of developing the framework and the goal is to support the teachers and the teachers using best practices in the classroom.
The value it adds is a common language between teachers.
A common language that we can all have conversations around, that we can collaborate around.
I see the instructional framework evolving over time by having a way for teachers to get feedback and a responsive team that will take that into account and incorporate it into the framework.
We want something that's gonna bring value to everyone and from that, they can develop the professional development based on what everybody's expressing is their need.
The action steps that follow would just be trying some of the strategies that you found there, slowly implementing them as you are able. You know, no one is expecting teachers to hit the bound running with everything that's in there.
This year we will be rolling out phase one and we will be hearing a lot more about the instructional framework. We look forward to this collective process in supporting all of our teachers and staff and more importantly, supporting our students on their journey of learning.
Hi, so I'm Michelle Gardner and I'm a teacher here in the district. And one of the things last year I was asked to be on the instructional framework team, to come in and be part of this team that had administrators, district level, school site level, and then teachers ranging from primary grades to upper grades to middle school to high school. It was like a comprehensive team of everybody. And at first I was like, how do you get all these people on the same page designing and doing the same things? But one of the things that was great is we talked a lot, and I heard Rosa Parks mention it, about designing your instruction, designing your lessons, designing your units. And I think that's some of the things that as teachers throughout the district are always asking like, what tools can we use? What resources are there for our, for our math, for our language arts, for our science? Where can we look? And most of us look on the internet, right? We're searching. But how much of what we find on the internet is valuable, is great, is good? So one of the things that we spent a lot of time this year is working with on the instructional design and looking at templates and resources and things that we can link to this site that our teachers could access so they could use it and it could bring value to them. So they could say, well, hey, you got, we need to do a unit on, you know, whatever subject it is. What can I look at? What's gonna be really resourceful for you? What, what can I do? What are other teachers in our district doing? So that we can have like that cohesive gap, that like equal playing field that every teacher, because we're, I mean, we're a huge district and not all of us can get together and talk. So this can be a really nice way for all of us to get together. We, you know, will all have equal access in the district to be able to access this information. And then it'll be valuable for our teachers. I think that it's not gonna be one of those things where it's like, ah, just another thing we have to do. It's gonna be actually something that people will use, they'll, they'll go to, they'll, they'll search for things like, how am I gonna do this unit? How am I gonna design this? So to me, I think this is a really, really, really great thing that we're working on. I'm really excited to see it develop. We're gonna work on the other pieces as we gear progresses. We're not rushing into it, we're doing it step by step to make sure it's something that, you know, that's gonna be, that's gonna be valuable. So I look forward to being a part of that. I think we're all gonna have a great common goal in forming this and then getting all the teachers and everybody's input into what they wanna see on this, that's gonna be, that's gonna be key in all of this, so.
Michelle, over the content on there, do you just, um, our teachers or help us out?
I think it can, I think it can be probably both. I think one of the things is that, that the team will look at content from the outside and link it to that. Like a lot of the things we were looking at were like, you know, lesson plans and, you know, all those different things. So it's not necessarily content from everybody on the inside, but we have so many amazing teachers and amazing, like, we're people who don't ever have a lot of the time to be able to sit down with each other and say, what are you doing? What are you doing? How are you designing this unit? What, what resources are you using? But this will be a way for, for our teachers to put it and they may have gained those resources from the app part too, so. And the second thing that we're super excited about is our PD YouTube channel. So Brittany, oh, I missed Brittany.
So thank you for having me tonight, Ford. So as they've given you a sneak peek about is we are going to be launching a professional learning YouTube channel. And how this kind of came about is the video you just watched regarding the instructional framework, our office was able to work with our PD team, our ed services team, and putting that together. And what that did is that really sparked a conversation of how can we create a better partnership between our communications office and our PD office to create something that can be a resource for our teachers, just like the instructional framework? Creating those resources for our teachers to utilize in a convenient manner. And so it really sparked this idea of giving them professional learning opportunities, not only here at the district office, but at their home, on their smartphone, in their classroom, conveniently accessible, in a manner that they can, you know, reach out and learn on their own, in the best, most convenient way. So we are just in the beginning of this, we're very excited. We hope that this YouTube channel will provide conveniently accessible videos and learning opportunities for our teachers, continually expandable opportunities for them. And then also it's gonna be customizable. So whatever the needs are of the district, of our staff, of our teachers, we're able to create new videos, create new content and provide that to them. We can, on the YouTube channel, create different playlists that are dedicated to specific subgroups of teachers on different topics. So for instance, we can have a playlist that discusses research-based instructional strategies for elementary school teachers. And we can have another playlist that might be best practices dedicated to literacy for our high schools. So we're really excited about it, just in the beginning stages and we're just excited to see where it's gonna fade us and how we can better achieve coherence across our district by providing valuable and convenient resources for our teachers and staff. So that, and I think I will add it back on to that.
So just to, um, to wrap up, um, thank you for your attention. Well, I guess I should say a few words. To wrap up, first of all, we have a few people here tonight. Zephon from Sonny Alba High School, Russ from Norco Elementary School, we have Ivy here and several of our administrators, David, because they've been a part of this coherence journey. We intentionally did not say, hey, we'll often go on coherence journey and really be all about coherence, because you know what happens? Sometimes we latch on to a person, exactly, you've heard about John Anderson Eddie, or we'll latch on to a concept like PLC. And if individuals and teams collectively don't do the work, the learning together, individually and collectively, what happens is they can go into a process, make some shortcuts, not intentionally, you can just think of, you know, the time issue or what have you, and then for whatever reason, it's believed it didn't work. So why are we doing this? So we've been involved in this process for four years. Veronica was on the first, was in phase one with the first group and she was part of the work that we did and we were learning about, well, what is coherence? We studied the book and we started working on, what does it mean to really collaborate? How, how do we deal with these two pillars? And it was, it was a labor of love and, and by the process. Cecilia came in, I don't believe the first year, I'm trying to remember Cecilia, what year you came in? I mean, we're in our year five with the work. And then the other thing we found out, that we learned along this way is sometimes you have schools that are involved in other things. And so they're just like, hey Lisa, we don't have the time, we just can't add another initiative. And I'll use an example of, they can, they were so deep in the work with me and me. And so we had a conversation, we looked at the data, we thought, what can we do where we can really show some growth in academics? And so then they said, give us some time, give us a year, we're, we're going in that direction. But the work was taking place, the teachers were engaged in collaboration, they were doing that kind of work. And I think it was Cecilia who said, it's about PLC. What we learned, Sam was working with Patrick Dolan at the time, with Substitution for Educational Change. Patrick Dolan, as you remember, passed one a couple of years ago. He was talking about the importance of going PLC deep because what he found is that the professional learning communities across the nation, we had a lot of schools or districts or even groups that were PLC-like, meaning they were engaged in conversation, but they weren't working deep with, with the work, what needed to be learned, what the students needed to do. So Patrick, he worked with our district for a while and was working with us on our, his formal coherence journey, if you will. Meanwhile, Mr. Dolan was doing the same thing and they were actually doing the same work. So my point in sharing this is we've really been engaged as a system in this work, not just in one division or at one school, it's been going in multiple divisions across the district. So are we satisfied? Absolutely not. There are many students that need, need more support. Are we attending to the needs when we're looking at equity? Absolutely yes. Is it something that's gonna happen overnight, overnight? No. This is a, this is continuous improvement. It's a journey of continuous, continuous learning. And we're not seeing these huge leaps in test scores and we know we're not gonna see that. What we wanted to be able to see that there are, the gradual change, the progress, the growth. So we are, we are headed, Dr. Lynn, in the right direction. President Yvar, we are headed in the right direction, but it does take time and there's, there's, you know, we're learning together. I just wanna share one other point. You have readiness in schools. Washington was ready. Rosa Parks was ready. Sonny Alba was ready. You also have schools that, as I said, they're engaged in other things, they, they may not be quite ready. Under Dr. Lynn's leadership, there were some things we did system-wide. As an example, we looked at the evaluation process of our principals, what are we asking our principals to do? One thing we came, one thing under Dr. Lynn's leadership was, we are going to have an instructional focus. Every side will have an instructional focus and that the work that they will do will align to their instructional focus. That in itself has been a learning journey. But the beauty of it is you have all 51 schools engaged in that process. And you have all 51 schools, the principals as an example, they're in collaborative teams. You have your teachers in collaborative teams. I would venture to say we have a hundred line staff in collaborative teams in, in areas. And that's because we're looking at what, the work that we're doing, how does that transfer to student success? We're looking at other needs of assessment because the tests, that's in place in, between March and June, right? And so what other kinds of data are we looking at that's, that's giving us information? We're, we said the other day, we're moving a ship, the Queen Mary, we're moving it. And, and you know, to pivot takes a little time. It's large. But we're really proud of the work we're doing. I'm gonna say, I'm so proud of our schools that are here tonight and the work that you're doing and the fact that we have teachers here, sharing the work that they're doing. Congratulations to all of you. And we know there's still more work to be done and President Yvar, you have our word that we will continue that. So I thank you, Ford, for your time and attention and everyone for being here to see me. Thank you.
And I wanna thank all the teachers and principals that are here also. You are making a difference in our students and we see it. We have to come down to this earth and say, we know we're not gonna jump 10, you know, numbers up and we're doing what we can and I know you are working hard to get our kids up to that level. And we, I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you. And communications team, you guys are blowing it out of the what. We guys are awesome. Thank you. Okay, consent items. Are there any items to be pulled from the agenda? Hearing that, oh, on education services. All ready? On the pull five, the argument-driven inquiry question. So we put on five A? Okay, we're going to put on five A. So do you have a motion?
Is there a question?
Is there a question on five A? Okay, so you put it on five. Yeah. Why is it only Rosa High School that's having this argument-driven inquiry and what are they going to get out of this, it's the policy, I just want to be, what's to be retrieved?
I don't know why they're the only school doing it. I, I didn't ask. That's a good question and I can follow up on that. My understanding is, is that it's involving the research that, that they do with their science experience and experiments and, and their collective inquiry and then you want to be able to argue their findings. But I can get more information on that.
Anybody else? Okay, so have motion?
To go on, on the motion, I can say. Wait, did you, did you pull the item?
I didn't, I just started.
If you pull it, what's up? You have to do it's up. Five A.
So is that five A? This is five A right here. It's only one, yeah.
So okay, what's the motion to take it up? I have a question on five A, if I can consent.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion. Let's say consent. All in favor? Any votes? All ready?
Consent.
Consent. Do we vote for this? No? Okay. So we, now we'll entertain a motion to.
Consent item, because there's no item above on the fourth.
It was consent.
Same one?
Only one.
Just one. Okay, so. All right. So can I have a motion to close?
I vote.
All in favor? All right. Seven thirty.